A one-minute warning, folks. Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our meeting tonight, and we are definitely glad that you are here. Okay, and honorable members of City Council, in accordance with the Virginia Beach City Code 2-21, and by the authority invested in me as mayor of the city of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special formal session of the Virginia Beach City Council on Wednesday, April 19th, 2023, at 6:00 PM at the Virginia Beach Convention Center, Bowl Room 1, 1019th Street. The purpose of this special form of session is to conduct a public hearing to obtain public input regarding, first, the fiscal 2023-24 Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program; next, authorization for $62,460,057 in general obligation bonds; next, the authorization of $26,030,000 in water and sewer utility bonds; authorization of $6,399,140 for stormwater utility bonds; increase in solid waste management fees and increases in water and sewer fees. If you wish to make comments during the meeting, please follow the two-step process below: register by WebEx at the address, you know, provided, and also to register with the city clerk's office by calling 757-385-4303 prior to 5:00 o'clock on April 19th, 2023. The special session will be broadcast on cable TV, www.vbgov.com, and Facebook Live. Citizens are encouraged to submit their comments to City Council prior to the special formations of the center at citycouncil@vbgov.com. I do have two announcements, and first of all, a message from Councilmember Christopher Taylor that we advise the audience in public that he's not in attendance due to a family emergency. However, he is viewing online. And also, I received an email from Mr. John Moss, you know, with a statement, and this will be made part of the record. Okay, is, I think, are we ready?
Yes, Your Honor. The first speaker is Kathleen Slindy, and then Don Newman.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, and members of the board. My name is Kathleen Slindy. I'm president of the Virginia Beach Education Association, which is our teachers and school employees' union. I'm here asking you to vote yes to fully fund the school board's budget as presented to you yesterday. Hearing the presentation and the questions you asked afterwards, I was reminded of a scene from the Captain Marvel movie where Carol Danvers, who is Captain Marvel herself, discovers that the implant in her neck has been suppressing her power and her strength. And while removing it, she says, "I've been fighting with one hand tied behind my back." And it struck me that this is how school division employees feel every time we get to budget season. Our city gladly accepts the benefits that come with our school division's excellent reputation, but are less enthusiastic about providing funds that support those outcomes. The long list of accomplishments and accolades that Virginia Beach residents hear about happen because teachers and staff work long hours and even weekends to make them happen, and there is no such thing as overtime pay in our world. And our city benefits from our reputation and from our hard work. I get it. There's a limited amount of money. I'm a teacher. Believe me, I know about working with a budget and stretching a dollar. But that's what this year's VBCPS budget finally does. It prioritizes and will make a real difference in the pay scale for school employees. Will it be enough to keep people from leaving? We have to see. Is it enough to attract more teacher candidates and others to come work here? I hope so. Dr. Spence shared yesterday that three of the highest-paying school districts in Virginia will need to hire as well, and they have openings that could take all of Virginia's new graduates from teacher preparation programs. So even if we do find teachers to hire and train, how long will they be willing to stay? Our schools have programs that help students excel and offer many advanced learning opportunities. These great schools are attractive to businesses looking to relocate. We cannot expect employees to stay where their compensation isn't enough to live in the city they work in. This year's school board budget finally starts to address this need in a meaningful, long-term way. Public education is a people business. We know that the teacher-to-student interactions are so very important for learning and the well-being of our students. This budget makes great progress in competitive pay to help retain veteran teachers and attract new ones. It improves the pay scale for our vital supports professionals as well, and there are still improvements in our programs and investments for future school-building projects. So I'm hoping that school employees will not feel that we have to fight our way forward with one hand tied behind our back. With City Council's support for the VBCPS budget, more competitive pay will help improve the teachers-to-student ratio, meaning teachers will have more time to meet individual needs and support students. This is also important during this time when we are seeing so many behavioral and emotional needs. School employees may not look like the other heroes that make our city great, but they are heroes daily. Think about the hours that we spend with students each day. Our work makes an impact. Our work makes a difference. And our students deserve to have the best and brightest educators to work with them. Voting yes to approve the budget means that there will be more marvelous opportunities and accomplishments in our future, bringing greater economic growth and better quality of life in our community.
Your time has expired.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Don Newman, and then Kate Lucas.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer and City Council. My name is Don Newman. I'm a high school math teacher, secretary of the Virginia Beach Education Association, and a Virginia Beach resident. I come this evening to ask you to approve the budget brought to you by the School Board of Virginia Beach City Public Schools. I followed the School Board's summer retreat where they heard the results and recommendations from the Segal Group, who conducted a salary and compensation study. The consultant shared what Virginia Beach school employees have known for some time. Our neighboring school divisions are doing more to recruit and retain school employees. The budget proposal sent to you by Dr. Spence and the School Board clearly incorporates the feedback from the consultant. This budget prioritizes employee salary and compensation. The budget includes a long overdue adjustment to pay for employees in both instructional and classified roles. It also provides funding to improve school safety, which cannot be neglected in today's climate. I am certain when you have the opportunity to brag about this city, you include the school system in your comments. I know my own military family chose to live in Virginia Beach because of the schools. I recently attended the convention of the Virginia Education Association, where I was able to talk with teachers from all over the state. Not all Virginia schools enjoy the amenities that we enjoy here in Virginia Beach. Virginia Beach schools have been excellent for so long that many residents and leaders take it for granted. Academic academies, middle and high school athletics, turf fields, field trips, free PSAT and AP tests, after-school clubs, activity buses, Chromebooks, tutoring subscriptions, and security measures all require funding. Programs, classrooms, buses, and cafeterias require people, and people cost money. All of these programs and extras that residents take for granted and contribute to the success of our students require funding. The teacher shortage is real. There are very few educators in the pipeline, and this city needs to do all it can to support the school board in their effort to recruit and retain quality employees. Virginia Beach employees should be able to afford to live in the city in which they work. Many school employees do not live in Virginia Beach, and many do not own property. I have a colleague who's been teaching for more than 36 years, who has two sons, who are in their early years of teaching here in Virginia Beach. These two young teachers live at home, not because they are afraid to leave the nest, but because they cannot afford to leave. The capital improvement plan also needs to be fully funded so that schools in this district can be repaired or rebuilt. School buildings are not as glamorous as historic hotels or Pharrell's newly-approved Atlantic Heart Project, but schools are vital for every successful city. We have schools right now that have mold and insect issues. Isn't it time we address these concerns? Please ensure that Virginia Beach City Public Schools remain excellent. Fund a budget that keeps teachers and other vital employees here at the beach, both to live and work. Do not let quality talent leave for another division. The working conditions of school employees are the learning conditions of our most precious residents. It is time to fully fund the budget request. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kate Lucas. After Ms. Lucas is Georgia Allen.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. My name is Kate Lucas, and I'm a high school teacher, as well as a resident of Virginia Beach. I am here tonight to ask you to approve the Virginia Beach City Public Schools' proposed budget for the next school year. Virginia Beach has not kept up with the rate of inflation for teacher pay in over a decade. Last year, when the rate of inflation rose to over 9%, the surrounding cities gave their teachers a 10% raise, while Virginia Beach only thought fit to give us a 6%. We fall behind nearly nearby cities as for pay. For example, a teacher with 25 years' experience makes $5,000 more in Chesapeake and over $6,000 more in Norfolk. Why should new teachers come to Virginia Beach? Why should experienced teachers stay? Virginia Beach is having difficulties retaining and recruiting teachers. I think it is outrageous that we go overseas to recruit teachers. We have all heard that the teacher shortage across the country. So what is Virginia Beach doing? Making it worse by less pay and less incentives than the surrounding cities. In Virginia Beach, the difference in pay between a brand-new teacher, just out of college, and a teacher with 17 years' experience is less than $7,000. Virginia Beach does not value teachers, and it does not value experienced teachers. This, of course, has significantly increased the workload for those of us who remain. Increased class sizes decrease the quality of education. Teachers have long worked well past contract hours and performed numerous extra duties without adequate compensation. Most of us no longer work 10- and 12-hour days. We are weary and resentful of working overtime and not getting paid. As a field comprised of predominantly females, it is no surprise that educators have been guilted into doing it for the children. Teachers now recognize that we are being manipulated, and we are beginning to say, "No. No, I will no longer write a letter of recommendation for your college-bound child. No, I will not screen National Honor Society applications nor chaperone a dance. No, I will no longer bring work home." If Virginia Beach does not keep up with the local communities, they will continue to lose qualified teachers and will not be able to recruit new teachers. Within three years, almost half of my math department will be gone, most to retirement and a few who plan to make career changes. That is 10 highly-qualified high school math teachers in one school. It is very difficult to recruit teachers now, let alone math teachers. What do you think is going to happen over the next few years? Remember the adage, "You pay what you get for"? Well, it is true. As far, and as we all know in the news, teaching has become a dangerous profession. There are increased behavior issues and violence in the school systems. I have personally broken up fights. Now am I expected to take a bullet for your child? It is time for us to make a stand. If we want to continue the excellent education that students receive in this county, then Virginia Beach needs to value teachers and school staff and accept the proposed school budget. It is long overdue.
Your time has expired.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Georgia Allen, which I do not see. Terry McMahon, and then Gary Medlin.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. It won't take me long. My name is Terry McMahon, and I'm really focusing in on real estate. This is really my portion of the budget I'm interested in. I live in a three-bedroom brick ranch built in 1967 that is less than 2,300 square feet and a half-acre lot in the Allerton neighborhood. It's about a block from Mill Dam and close to the schools. I'm here today to address my concern about high percent increase in property taxes in 2023 and what I see for 2024. My taxes went up 14.3% and 16.1% respectively. In the past, they seem to be aligned with the general increase I saw when I did research on the city budget for the real estate taxes, the sources of income. And I had no qualms, but the last couple of years, my property has gone out of sight, and I'm sure my neighbors as well. And I think it's probably symptomatic of the assessment and some other deals. But, so, my 14.3% increase in 2023 was almost three times the percent real estate revenue increase for Virginia Beach. And my 16.2% increase in 2024 that's projected is over twice the projected Virginia Beach revenue increase of 7.5%. Retired people like myself, I've been retired for 10 years. It's, I expect no taxes, and most of the increase is apparently in the property value. The percent of my home is very small relative to the increases. But the land assessment has gone out of sight the last couple of years. If the new assessment, and I guess really, if the assessments stand, my point is, then the rate per hundred, that the tax rate, needs to go down. Otherwise, it appears to me we're out of fiscal control. People who are retired, been here for a long time, have seen reasonable management of the funds and the tax increases, but this is the first time I've been here. I looked at the increases in the last two years of what I'm paying. I think, I don't know of anyone that's got raises to that level or salary increases. So on older person, people who are on fixed incomes, mixture of the social security, maybe some pension, and other things, it's tough. So I'm hoping that when you look at your real estate section and look at how you're managing taxes, at least for real estate, that folks like myself, older folks, it's a mixed neighborhood, and if backs up the Broad Bay, I think you're probably aware of that. But it's mixed between small houses, other houses, and lake houses or Broad Bay. And if, I tried to look up-
Your time has expired.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Gary Medlin. After Mr. Medlin is George Bryant.
Good evening, sir. Good evening. Mayor Dyer, members of City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. On April 13th, the Virginian Pilot published an article titled "Natural Disasters in Virginia Increase by Nearly 140%." This statistic was based on incidents taking place in the last 20 years and which cost at least $1 billion. Virginia experienced 28 natural disasters from 1983 to 2002. The disasters increased to 67 over the next 20 years. Flooding doubled. Predictions are that the environmental disasters will increase in frequency and in intensity. What can we do? We can stick our heads in the plentiful oceanfront sand or plan for mitigation that will actually help. City Council should set aside money to adopt certain environmentally-related practices. Specifically, I encourage you to convert the motor pool to electric vehicles, switch all-electric bulbs to LED bulbs for city buildings, parking lots, and streets, switch power sources to solar panels installed on roofs, and finally, plant trees. Initial cost for these changes may be somewhat high, but will pay off in the long run. For example, battery-driven vehicle prices are high but require less maintenance, and fuel cost is significantly less. Also, less maintenance needs equate to longer-lasting vehicles. Building operators who've switched to renewable energy see their electric bills reduced drastically. Solar power significantly reduces power costs. LED light bulbs have been on the market for several years, and while they cost more to purchase, they last two, three, four times as long as incandescent bulbs, and they use less electricity. The 13 lead schools in Virginia Beach provide good examples of how these building innovations save money. Finally, planting trees is good flood mitigation strategy. Trees intercept and transpire water, reducing moisture in the soil. They also provide surface area where rainwater lands and evaporates. In closing, often when I propose an idea that can help the environment and/or people in general, I am told, "Yes, this is a good idea, but there's no money." However, we've all been around long enough to know that if an idea is a priority, there is always money sufficient to implement it. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is George Bryant. After Mr. Bryant is Diana Howard.
Good evening, sir. Good to see you. Good evening, Mayor Dyer, members of the council. I'm George Bryant, and I've lived in Wolfsnare Plantation for 55 years. And during that time, the taxes have gone up more than twice what the income has gone up. You all have a spending problem. That's the big, that's the big problem. But your claim of no tax increase in the proposed budget is misleading. The default tax rate is 90.77 cents based on the new real estate tax assessments. The proposed 99-cent rate is an increase of 8.23 cents per $100. That's a tax increase of 8.25%. Some taxpayers will pay more, some will pay less, depending on assessments. Any tax increase is burdensome. We're all wrestling with inflation on nearly everything. Many are struggling just to put food on the table and to keep lights on. Credit card balances are higher than ever. While the city also faces inflation, you have many more places to reduce spending than the taxpayers who are trying to balance household budgets. Many can't come up with a few hundred dollars for an emergency, and the city wants to tax us for vacant jobs, and most of which will never be filled. The city has a habit of living higher on the hog than its citizens. As evidenced by fancy buildings, the best equipment, school construction costs are outrageous and need to be scaled back, and we need to build less fancy but still functional facilities. That goes for the city as well as schools. Every line item in the budget needs to be reviewed to see if it is still necessary. Every position needs to be evaluated to determine if it can be consolidated elsewhere. Government tends to have too many employees in too many places. It needs to operate more like private industry. There's room to carve expenses from a $2.5 billion budget. That's just a hell of a lot of money. And there's got to be places that, that there can be some savings in there. The various tax and fee increases you have proposed against citizens of Virginia Beach are just not justified. The city's debt and unfunded liabilities remain a problem. The city's proposed increase in spending far exceeds any increases most working folks have received, even with the larger wage increases that have occurred in the last year. Over the 55 years we have owned our house, the taxpayers have, the taxes have increased, as I said earlier, twice as fast as their income.
Sorry, your time has expired.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Diana Howard, and after Ms. Howard is Tammy Mullins Rice.
Hey, good evening, Dee.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Diana Howard. I'm the chair of the Virginia Beach Tea Party, and yes, we are taxed enough already. I brought my real estate assessment with me. I don't know if you can see it, but it's going up 9.6%. It says on here, it went up 20.34% last year. So I don't know where you think I'm supposed to get this money. It's not in my pocket. I didn't get a raise, right? This is not money I can spend, right? Unless I sell my house, that's not extra revenue, okay? This was in the paper, blew it up so you can see it. Notice of Proposed Real Estate Tax Increase. Keeping the rate the same is still a tax increase because the assessment went up. And it even says in here that to bring it down to not getting more money in taxes from real estate, you would have to bring it down to .90 cents, okay? Otherwise, it's a tax increase. Now, I know you have the same inflation problems that we have. You're getting more tax revenue from us on sales tax, meals tax, grocery tax, gas tax. If any of us got a raise, you got more in that, in income tax, right? So why do you think we should insulate you from inflation by paying more taxes when we're already paying you more taxes, right? Like George says, you have more ways of reducing the burden on us than we do. A lot of us are on fixed income. We can't do it, right? In the executive summary, the city manager said, "We had 1,000 vacancies." Didn't happen overnight, and you've like gotten 200 of them, you know, hired, and it's going to take a while to get more hired, but you're going to add 130 more positions? How many of these positions that aren't filled, that are vacant now, have been vacant for years? You ain't never going to fill. It's time you rethink those positions, eliminate those that are going to be impossible to fill, right? And repurpose them for positions you actually need, okay? You should be reducing the size of government, not increasing it, right? Ugh, it's unbelievable. I mean, why don't you think about maybe reducing or redoing the tip fund, okay? Why does all the money in the tip fund, you know, have to go to something in the water when they do that? Why they get to keep all the tax revenue on that? Why don't we get any of the amusement tax? We're here all year. I bowl every week, right? I'm just saying, there's just so much, I think, that you all can do.
Your time has expired.
How, oh, you're kidding, really?
Oh, thank you, Dee.
The next speaker is Tammy Mullins Rice, and then Nicole DeGabbio.
Thank you.
Welcome.
My name is Tammy Mullins Rice, and I'm the president of the C-TAC Community Civic League. And of course, I'm here to talk about the lack of improvement with our rec center and our park. So I just want to read some facts to you, some facts that I pulled off of the Parks and Recs website. So the Bayside Rec Center is 83,931 square feet. The Bow Creek Recreation is 6,773 square feet. Great Neck Rec Center, 83,931 square feet. Kentsville Recreation Center, 87,000 square feet. Princess Anne, 83,931 square feet. Williams Farm Recreation Center, 70,993. C-TAC Rec Center, 22,000 square feet. It's one, it's one-third of your smallest rec center, which is the Bow Creek one. This rec center, I know it's not the oldest. I know there's like three other in the queue. We're not talking about age and maintenance. We're talking about inequity. It doesn't have the same amenities that any of the other rec centers have. We live in C-TAC. I have people here from C-TAC. We're taxpayers. We're voters, and we deserve the same amenities that everybody else has in the rest of the city. These rec centers have multipurpose double gems. We have one. They have, oh, party rooms. Oh, let's talk about the party rooms. On the C-TAC website, it says it has a group fitness studio I have never seen it, and a party room. That must be the one community room that they have that they use for everything. That must be the party room in the description. Even better, the description on the website doesn't even say it's in C-TAC. It says, "Facility is located near the Shadow Lawn community in the southern end of the oceanfront resort area." Does that say C-TAC to anybody in this room? It doesn't to me. So not only do we not have a facility that we need to have with amenities, it doesn't even say it's in C-TAC, as if you're ashamed to say that there's property there that we use. Let's talk about the C-TAC Park. C-TAC Park has a porta potty with a broken door. That door has been broken for over a year now. We've talked about it, said something about it, still broken. The door is broken. We don't have any parking, but the animal shelter across the street, it has plenty of parking. We can park there, but if you have a pet or you're looking for a pet, you got a place to park. And they have bathrooms in there, too. That means, as a city, you care more about the animal shelter than you do about the citizens of C-TAC. All we're asking for is equity. I know that they say that C-TAC-
I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker- The next speaker is Nicole Delgadoio. And Barbara Beesel.
Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Nicole Delgadoio, and I'm speaking to you tonight as a resident, parent, and city employee. I live in the beautiful Ocean Park neighborhood, and I'm the proud parent of a ninth grader at Cox High School. I'm also a fifth grade teacher at Thero Good Elementary School. As a resident, I'm thrilled to live in such a vibrant, thriving, and peaceful community. As a parent, I couldn't be more impressed with the quality of the education my son has received thus far. But as a teacher, I am deeply concerned with the future of our public schools here in Virginia Beach. As you are likely aware, many of our veteran teachers and new college grads are choosing to find employment in neighboring school districts in order to receive a more competitive salary. As it stands, VBCPS teachers are among the least paid teachers in Hampton Roads. Last year, my daughter graduated from the Health Science Academy at Bayside High School, and she was accepted into Virginia Tech as a biology major. After many years of stocking funds into her 529 college savings account, I realized there was still a huge deficit, and I'd be unable to support my daughter financially. Subsequently, I was forced to get a second job as a bartender on the weekend. After a long week in the classroom, I rushed home on Friday afternoons to quickly change and work a night shift that often concluded late in the evening. After months of working two jobs in order to pay for my daughter's college, I became very frustrated, and finally the anger set in. How is this possible? I'm 49 years old. I've been teaching for 17 years. I have a master's degree in education from an Ivy League university. I've earned and maintained my National Board certification for 20 years. Last year, I was named a top five finalist for Citywide Teacher of the Year. Yet, as a teaching professional, my salary does not meet my financial needs. I'm not alone. A veteran teacher I know parks cars at an oceanfront restaurant. I met one of my son's teachers because he was my waiter. Another colleague of mine runs a side business selling baked goods. Another coworker just completed her Realtor's license so she can be a property manager part-time. The list goes on and on. Many years ago, I attended a conference in Washington, DC, and listened to Arnie Duncan, the U.S. Secretary of Education at the time. He spoke about the importance of our nation's teachers as one of our most treasured and valued resources. He said it was time to elevate the profession. Now is the time. Will you help to elevate the profession? Please support our schools by fully funding the proposed school budget. The impact on teacher retention and recruitment will be profound. Virginia Beach will become the most competitive city in Hampton Roads for teacher salaries, and your most experienced teachers will receive the compensation they deserve. What does this mean for lowering the tax rate? It means you have the difficult task of choosing the future of our students and the future of our city schools over the pressure to reduce the tax rate. Nelson Mandela once said, "May your choices reflect your hopes, not your fears." We are all united in our hope for the future and to lead our children through excellence in education. Thank you for your time and for your continued support.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Barbara Beesel. And then Vic Nichols.
Could you repeat the next again? Because it's hard to hear with the clapping.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Beesel. This is my 17th year as an instructor in VBCPS. I'm speaking to you tonight to ask you to support the public school budget as proposed by the superintendent and as approved by the school board. I could stand here and tell you how supporting schools is good for the children and helps grow the community and attracts business to the area. All those points are true. But I'll leave it to the community and the businesses to make that argument, and tonight I'll fight for our bank accounts instead. The chart I've given you shows you what has happened to our instructional pay scale over the last 15 years, if you'd like to refer to it. You can see the starting teacher's salary at the top, which is step zero. The numbers underneath that indicate how much money a teacher on a certain step makes compared to the previous step. If you look at the far right column, in 2008, the steps were equally spaced. Almost every step equated to just over $900 additional pay. But in the years since 2008, those steps have not been spaced equally. What you're seeing in this chart is pay scale compression. With each year, the step zero pace shifts significantly to attract new teachers, but the subsequent steps move very little. The underlying message is that recruitment is the priority in Virginia Beach, and retention of experienced teachers like me is not. The first three years of a teacher's career are typically the hardest. Even in the before times, many teachers wouldn't make it past year three. Imagine a teacher who began teaching in 2019 on step zero and then taught for three years through a global pandemic and its aftermath. This year, that teacher, with three incalculably valuable years of experience, will earn about $600 more than a brand-new teacher fresh out of college. That $30 per paycheck is an absolute pittance and does not remotely reflect the steep learning curve, the daily trial by fire, and the financial hardship that that three-year teacher has endured. In my own case, if the school system had just kept the 08-09 pay scale and walked me down that right-hand column, I would have earned about $10,000 more cumulatively than I have actually earned with the raises we have received. That missing $10,000 could have compounded to nearly $26,000 if I had it to invest in my retirement for the past 15 years. To me, that means that the raises that we got weren't raises at all. They were just part of a financial balancing act, and the teachers got dropped every time. Multiply how that third-year teacher feels by 15, and that's how I feel tonight. Multiply that by about 4,300, and that's how every teacher is feeling. And that's the real story behind that chart. Now, we finally have a chance to fix a problem that's more than a decade in the making. The school budget proposes to alleviate the pay scale compression, and the significant raises in the new pay scale tell every educator that their experience is valuable, that their time is meaningful, and that their financial sacrifice isn't endless. Please support our schools by giving VBCPS teachers and staff our due recompense. It is long past time. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Vic Nichols. After Ms. Nichols is Patricia Thebert.
I'm the Virginia Beach Party legislative chair. Last week marked the two-year anniversary of declining real wages for ordinary American workers due to ongoing high inflation. The latest CPI release last week shows prices grew 20% faster than wages over the past year. Inflation in the past two years is approximately 15%, costing us approximately $7,400 in income. Those unfixed incomes are one-sixth poorer today than they were two years ago. I have retired folks that are having to make some very harsh choices, and I mean living, food, medical. Their assessments have gone up $40,000 to $100,000 in two years. Core inflation actually increased compared with last month. When the House of Representatives won't raise the debt ceiling without spending cuts, the administration will declare a temporary default on U.S. debt, and the stock and bond market are going to immediately crash. Where are your bonds going to be then? Because your bond rating assesses revenues and obligations, the total burden falling on the taxpayer because we pay the bills and how overburdened we are, an assessment of the probability of default. The real threat to bond rating is reckless debt issuance. Higher taxes are not going to fix that. Economic conditions that affect revenues and existing debt burden drive that rating. So when economic conditions change, credit rating analysis sit there and assess how quickly you can respond. And when the taxpayers are overburdened, good luck with that. Reducing spending, postponing capital construction, and reducing the budget and debt burden is a requirement. I had a speaker last night say $2,000 a month was doable. Well, in Virginia Beach, and these are real estate numbers, housing units are down 27% from a year ago. Active inventory is down 39% from a year ago. Prices are up 5% from a year ago. The days on the market are 50% higher than a year ago. New listings are down 27%. Current contracts are down 3%. And months of supply are down 16% from a year ago. Those higher taxes are putting a huge hurting on the economy. You've got to be careful of that, because when people can't pay, what are you going to do? So don't be a heiny and vote for 90. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Patricia Thebert. And the next speaker will be Max Canano.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Sorry. Good evening, mayor and councilmen and women. I am Pat Thebert. I have been working for the city for 15 years with the Human Services Department. With the inflation rate at about 7% to 8%, the proposed 5% raise will put city employees backwards, not forwards. I would like to see a 10% across the board for all employees that would at least help them move forward a little bit. The city has many employees that are working two and three jobs. The city should pay the employees enough to where they can live in the city, and they don't need that second job. I have spoken with employees that say they have had a shift differential in the past, and about two years ago, it was taken away from them. That has caused them a hardship on their family because they worked that shift so that they would be able to have that extra money. So now they're, you know, trying to make money on other jobs where they should have been able to do it just having the same job they had. The city employees work hard to keep the city running, and we need you, the city council, to realize that and give us at least a 10% raise. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Max Canano. And then Brian Luciano.
Max, welcome.
Good evening. It's good to be here. Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, honorable members of city council. My name is Max Canano, and I represent over 500 sworn career men and women of the Virginia Beach Fire and EMS departments. I come before you tonight to ask that you hold harmless the proposed compensation increase as well as public safety from any potential cuts you are considering to the manager's proposed budget. While we pride ourselves in being a safe city to work and live, some say that we are the safest large city in the nation. The only issue with that is the fact that the publication that says this only bases its determination on FBI crime statistics. This study does not factor in fire department staffing, police and sheriff's department staffing, and it also does not take into account the fact that we usually have about half as many staffed ambulances by population as any other locality in Hampton Roads. All of these items are addressed in the budget and are necessary enhancements for our current state. When you make your decisions about compensation, in addition to looking at things like inflation and cost of living, it's important to look regionally and see what has been proposed as well as nationally. In January, social security increased by 8.7%. And regionally, we have a 7.5% proposed increase in Norfolk, 7.5% in Hampton, 5% in Chesapeake, 5% Newport News, 5% in Portsmouth. 5% for Virginia Beach should be the absolute minimum that you settle on. Finally, I would ask that you take a look at the proposals you received for increasing the flex leave and sick leave accruals for your operational firefighters. Dead last in the region for an employee benefit category is not somewhere we should be. Thank you for your continued careful deliberations about the FY 2024 budget.
Thank you, Max.
The next speaker is Brian Luciano. And then Nick Jones.
Welcome, Lucky.
Thank you for having me here. I could very, I could speed this up by saying I agree with Max and just leave it at that. But I just want to say that I came before you. Many of you were on council over the last couple of years, and I've been here speaking to each of you over the last few years, specifically last year when I came before you to talk about the importance of the step plan and the market adjustments and how that would affect recruitment and retention. And for those of you that were on council at that time, I thank you for that because we've made strides for recruitment and retention because of that and because of your work. So I thank you for that. But to everyone on council, new and returning, I would say that that work is not done, and we need to continue to do that. And one thing that we must do is we must continue to fund the step plan, or else we're going to stagnate and find ourselves in the exact same position that we have been for the last decade. So anything that you can do to continue moving us forward with the step plan and adjusting anything on the cost of living would be greatly appreciated. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucky.
The next speaker is Nick Jones. After Mr. Jones is Vanessa Fagio.
Good evening, mayor. Hello. Good evening, mayor and city council members. I'd like to thank you on behalf of the workers in the city of Virginia Beach for the step plan that was introduced. And it was definitely a step in the right direction. And I hope that in the next budget coming up, we can continue to make improvements so that the city can continue to move forward in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Vanessa Fagio. And then Christina Valentine.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, and members of the council. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Vanessa Fagio. I'm a resident of Virginia Beach, and I own a home in District 2. I am a Gold Star surviving widow. My late husband, Special Operations Chief Petty Officer Navy SEAL David Fagio, passed away all active duty in 2014 of service-related brain cancer at the age of 30. I'm here to discuss the purpose or the proposed real estate ordinance for surviving spouses of service members who died on active duty while in service of our country. The proposed ordinance originated as House Bill 957. The bill was passed unanimously during the 2022 Virginia General Assembly. It grants the municipalities the power to extend the existing real estate tax break to surviving spouses of service members who died in line of duty. Adopting the changes in this proposed ordinance has the power to make big changes for individuals, their lives, or their families, and Virginia Beach as a whole. It will help retain taxpaying residents by easing the financial burden of homeownership, especially after such a loss. In most cases, the service member is the primary, if not sole, income in the household. It will also encourage Virginia Beach residents to stay in a military-friendly community surrounded by much-needed peers and helpful resources that are just not available or accessible elsewhere. And I can personally say that it will truly honor the service and sacrifice of not just the service member, but also the families. If past Virginia Beach will join other largely military-populated municipalities such as Loudoun County and Fairfax County, who have already adopted these changes. My husband, David, passed away of service-related brain cancer. Large governing entities such as the Department of Defense and the VA acknowledge that his cancer and his death are service-related. But because my husband did not die directly at the hands of the enemy, I and others like me do not qualify for the existing real estate tax benefit. I'm asking not just for myself or for my daughter, but for others like me. It's a very small number, can make a big impact and a big change. Please vote yes for the proposed ordinance. This may be a line item to some, but it is much more to those who will be affected by the change. Virginia Beach is my home. This is where my made family is. This is where the community ties us to the life and the memory of my husband. Please do not let the method of death be the detail that we discuss when remembering our fallen heroes. Please honor their service, and please honor their sacrifice.
Your time has expired.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Christina Valentine. After Ms. Valentine is Tracy Smigel.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Thank you for having me tonight, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, and members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to all of you this evening. My name is Christina Valentine, and I have been a resident of Virginia Beach since 1992. I currently live in District 2. I am the Gold Star surviving spouse of Tom Valentine, a United States Navy SEAL. I'm here today to discuss the proposed real estate ordinance for surviving spouses of service members who have died on active duty while in service to our great nation. There are fewer than 90 line-of-duty death survivors in the entire state of Virginia who are not currently in receipt of the tax reduction, and fewer than 20 line-of-duty death survivors left out of the reduction in Virginia Beach. Tonight, in this room, there are three military widows that this change will positively affect. My late husband, Tom, served his country with steadfast devotion for over 19 years. We were so close to retirement. On 13 February of 2008, the extreme nature of his job and the more extreme nature of his training took his life. Tom died while training for high-altitude, high-opening insertions into enemy territory. He was training to find Bin Laden. Tom's death occurred while in the line of duty for this country. The Department of Defense and the Department of Veteran Affairs records Tom's death as a line of duty. But as Vanessa has mentioned before, my husband a line of duty, but as Vanessa has mentioned before, my husband did not die at the hands of the enemy. I, like many others in this room tonight, do not qualify for the existing real estate tax benefit. I respectfully request that this council vote yes for the proposed ordinance change. I am not asking just for myself and my two children but for others like me. Your vote of yes is a means to improve the quality of life for my family and for other surviving spouses who find themselves in the same situation. The great community of Virginia Beach has a deep and abiding connection to the military. It is because of this connection that I chose to remain in Virginia Beach after Tom died. I chose to stay here and raise our two children. Virginia Beach can be the shining example to the rest of the country to follow on what communities can do to honor the family of our fallen military service members. This council's vote of yes affords the small group relief, relief from a portion of the burden of homeownership, but the reason we are more burdened financially is because we have lost our principal earner. A vote of yes will encourage other Gold Star families to stay in our military-friendly community. And I must echo again what Vanessa said. We as a community must not let the method of death be the detail we discuss when remembering so many fallen heroes. Please honor their service, please honor their sacrifice by voting yes to the proposed ordinance. I sincerely appreciate the time afforded to me to speak to you tonight, and I thank each and every one of you for your time and consideration.
Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor? Rocky?
I could. I remember when Tom passed and we got the news, and my kids grew up with Christine's kids, and I think we all owe him a big debt of gratitude and a big round of applause for being survivors here today.
Well said, Rocky.
The next speaker is Tracy Smigel, and then Barbara Messner.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Tracy. I work for the Department of Human Services as a case manager, excuse me, Developmental Services Division. I've been here for 30 years, and we've recently, since March, have lost 30% of our case management union. Sorry, I'm choked up now from the story prior to me. Today's only April 19th, and we've lost 30% since March. We serve very vulnerable people in our community with multiple disabilities. Some are small and some are enormous. And when we have case managers leave, everybody that they were supporting, the citizens, those of us that are still here, we, we, we take on that responsibility. We're state-mandated services. So we want to serve, we are required to serve, and so that's what we do. So we're sort of in a crisis zone right now, like more than I've, I've experienced in my entire career. So I appreciate the $15 minimum wage from last year. That was great that you guys approved that. I spoke with someone the other day. They just lost three people in their department to Amazon, so those that can make $18 an hour. We need better compensation for new people. We need more, 5% is not enough for those of us that have been there a long time. We've just lost some folks who have been working for the city for 17 years, 10 years. And, and I've also been thinking about, just today, we're getting ready to go into, every year we have shelter duty training, and the people who man the shelters are us human services workers, and we're working with skeleton staff, you know? I hope we don't have anything big happen this year because we're, we're bare bones, and it's, it's going to be tough. And we want to be there, we want to do everything we can for our citizens, but we just need more compensation to, like I said, to keep people, bring more people in and not lose any more people. We're a good city, citizen, I mean, excuse me, good city, and we want to serve our citizens the best we can. And when you've got vulnerable people, and they need, they need us, you know? And it would be, imagine if you had a neighbor who had major disabilities and, and, and a lot of issues, and their case manager were so stretched thin that they were having a hard time getting them everything that they would need. It would be a tough situation for everybody, not just the individual but for the neighbors, the neighborhood, the whole community at large. It creates a lot of concern. So I really would appreciate if you would think more about the 5% and instead look at 10%. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Barbara Messner. After Ms. Messner is Elaine Fekety.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. What city of 460,000 plus 150 million tourists has to advertise in other states to find employees? Most of them left after the mass shooting. You can't even protect your own employees. You had mass shootings for something in the water a month before. As far as the rec centers, they used to be free. They weren't geared to advertising for tourists and ripping off tourists. We have long-term debt based on global public-private partnerships, steel, Audis, undersea cable, debt bonds. You spent money telling people that you needed to take a half billion dollars in debt, perpetual debt. You created the flooding with uncontrolled growth and tearing down the trees. Failure to protect entire building two, who are still suffering. You hire outside people tied to J Cox firm to investigate. Public Private Education Act uses federal education money for rec centers and sports centers. You create taxing districts and you keep the money. You should cut all employees bureaucracy. They don't need 150,000, 100,000 a year, 250,000-plus bonuses. Recruiting a police chief and a city manager from Cincinnati. I heard you mention Moss. I don't know why, but he was anxious to mention at the Building, Building 19 retreat, which few people can go to, you know? Town Bank, Partners Cox, Town Bank, Dominion Energy, Steel. Victim families, many are still suffering. You've done nothing to help them. Certain people and certain groups encouraged you to vote for the debt bonds. The money you spend on TV ads and in this publication, which should not be in city council, you fund it. Henley has full-page ads. Look at this, full-page ad in Princess Anne Indy for parks and rec. You compete against the private sector. This is Dominion Energy full-page ad.
Your time has expired.
Thank you.
The next, the next speaker is Elaine Fekety. After Ms. Fekety is Susan Potter. Sorry, Susan Potter.
Welcome, Elaine.
Hello, good evening. Y'all look tortured up there, I have to say. It's great to be here every year for the annual budget party, as I call it, and I'd like to welcome the new members to council and welcome back the re-elected members to council. And the good thing about that is it means that's seven of you that have been out in the community in the last year, listening and talking to more and more people than you normally would. I was out there as well, and I imagine you heard the same thing that I heard, but tonight I'm just going to reiterate to make sure you hear it one more time. The resounding message I heard was, why in the world did they raise the taxes last year? And yes, it was a tax raise, no matter what rhetoric is thrown around. You had to have a hearing, you had to have a vote. It was a raid. It was a tax increase. To say that it wasn't is, people are over that. And they, and what the people were saying to me is, what will I do? What will we do if it is raised again this year? I had people running to their kitchens and pulling out their tax bills and saying, look at this, look at this, we're on fixed incomes. We're supposed to be a city for a lifetime, and right now we're kind of driving them out, and that was really sad for me to see firsthand. Here's an example, I bet all of y'all are so busy, you probably do e-bill on auto pay, but here's something else that people look at. Here's an electric bill. There are 11 line items that say tax or fee. Some of it's built into the budget, some of it's not, some of it's state. 11 line items on one electric bill. Here's a phone bill. There's nine on here. Here's a cable bill. There's 12 on here. People are just seeing tax, tax, tax. Whoops, I'm sorry. And the reason I bring this up, I think I've shared this story with you before, when my daughter was a toddler and she was learning to read, she liked to sit at my desk with me when I was paying bills, and she would look at them, and she, of course, could read three-letter words. So she'd say, why do all of them say tax on them? I thought you were paying the phone bill. And I would try to explain what the tax was and bottom line was. One day she looked at me at four years old and she said, mommy, what do we do when all the money goes to taxes and we don't have anything left over? And that, ladies and gentlemen, is where we seem to be today. With what I am hearing from the citizens in the community, another tax increase is not going to be tolerated very well. Now, no one is telling you to not support first responders and teachers. That's your primary responsibility. No one's telling you to cut those things. There's plenty of other things that you could look at, and it's always been a mystery to me that we don't develop a revenue-neutral budget first. Have the same amount of money this year that you had last year. Show us what that covers, show you what that covers, and then have the extras, the add-ons, so that you can see, especially the new people, the transparency of what we would need, do we need to raise the tax because of that? The public could see it. That makes much more sense to me than doing an automatic...
Time? Your time has expired.
Thank you very much.
Anyway, I have faith in you. You can do it.
The next in-person speaker is Terry Green. After Mr. Green is Kirk Clark.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Councilmembers, and Mr. DeHagen. Hey, I'm here on the city of Virginia Beach employees. I'd like to thank y'all for this step program that y'all implemented last year, but I know everything has to be tweaked and get it right. All right. My thing is this, I got a Class A CDL. After we got the step plan last year, I drove out to shop on Concert Drive, look at a big old school bus. We hiring at $21 an hour. We only getting 15. And that's the top of the line, CDL, Class A, not Class B. So I think we ought to revamp our pay for Class A CD workers because if a bus driver can get 21, we should be getting 25. And these are why we are so shorthanded because we are so back in time on pay. If you're going to hire for a study, let's hire for the pay your employees. Let's hire that study to put us where New York or any other city this size. This can put us in place so we won't have to live in a shoot-up neighborhood paying $500 a month for mortgage, for rent, or whatever. But we are basing, our base salaries are not worth it. We living in the 1800s, and we need to move up a little bit more. And it's no point to y'all, because I know you're doing a fabulous job, but we need better pay without the city because there's a lot of tension out there being shorthanded every day of employees. You don't want another building too, but it's about to happen because we so shorthanded and the work is power. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me. And we also should have a 10% raise. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kirk Clark. After Mr. Clark is John Watt.
Hey, welcome, Kirk.
Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor, City Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to be here to speak to you. Last year I was here, so I'm back again. Same thing, C-TAC, C-TAC, C-TAC. Our park and our rec center, smallest in Virginia Beach. Our community once again is not on the budget. And I say why? Are we asking too much as the smallest rec center? Are we asking too much? One of the things that I want you to do is to really think about this collectively because we need each and every one of you to, to support C-TAC. Have we invested in the oldest African-American community as much as we should in, in the nation? Have we invested in the oldest African-American community in the nation as much as we should have? Have we? And we really need you to support us and help us to fix some of these issues. So today we're addressing the rec and the park. Equity, equity was addressed. I think that's all part of it too in regards to answering that question. Are we being fair in our assessment? Are we making sure that in our discussions, the word C-TAC comes out of our mouth and we think about it? Because this community has been here several times. Myself, I'm a transplant. I'm in C-TAC by ways of Oceana, retired Marine, and it's been a blessing to me to learn the history and the quality of families and peoples and lives that are there within C-TAC. But you have a lot of C-TAC members that are lifelong C-TAC members that have been fighting for some of the things that they need that goes back again to equity and making sure that we're doing the right assessments. Equity for C-TAC. Equity for C-TAC. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
The next, the next speaker is John Watt, and then Donnie Gregory.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is John Watt, Navy-retired and a proud member of the Virginia Beach Tea Party. The Navy brought my wife and I to Virginia Beach in 1977, and it's been, pretty much been our home ever since, and, and we do love it here very much. In the Navy, I was in the capability gap assessment business and efficiency review business, tooth-to-tail resources and money and budget. And that's what we're doing here, basically same side of the, both sides of the same coin, funded capabilities, other side is budget efficiencies. It's very, it's not, not easy, and, and I know you're, you're looking at this hard. Requirements are real, but so are dollar constraints. We need to clearly distinguish between required functions and nice-to-have budget requests. There is a difference. The citizens of Virginia Beach need tax relief. All of our easy budget cut choices are in the past. We're, we're getting right down to the bone and the muscle. You represent us, and I urge you to take a long, hard look at the proposed city budget and cut out everything that is not a required function of the city. The time is now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Donnie Watt, I'm sorry, Donnie Gregory. And then after Mr. Gregory will be Kristen Fenty.
Welcome, sir.
How you doing? Mayor Dyer and Assistant Mayor Wilson and to the distinguished colleagues, council members. I just have a, a very, very short reading. I probably won't be able to say a whole lot because this is going to take up all of my time, and I just want this to, little readout.
And really a special privilege to rise today to honor the 200-plus anniversary of the C-TAC community, the oldest African-American community in the United States. The community named for the sea attack of the coast by the British Navy is a stalwart in Hampton Roads, steadfastly protecting civil rights and promoting the African-American community. Throughout its proud history, the C-TAC community has stood for doing what is right in the face of adversity. Going back to the early 1800s, C-TAC fishermen braved the rough waters of the Atlantic to save the passengers of a ship that had wrecked off the coast. The men of C-TAC have fought in every major American war, including serving as air raid wardens in World War II to protect the citizens of Virginia Beach from potential airstrikes. And when the C-TAC community needed a fire department, the C-TAC veterans from World War II came together to build the first fire department owned and operated by African-Americans. Even in, in its early days, Mr. Speaker, C-TAC has shown a commitment to educating its youth. In 1908, C-TAC parents formed their first school at Mount Olive Baptist Church, and a few years later formed the C-TAC Public School League. Later, the community provided the land for the C-TAC Elementary School. And today, C-TAC continues its commitment to education by providing funding for college students. Mr. Speaker, I am truly honored to represent this amazing community within my district. Their continuous hard work... Their continuous hard work to promote education, civil rights, and the safe Hampton Roads community are nothing short of admirable. In October 2011, in October 2012, the community celebrated 200-plus years of being a vibrant, active, engaged, and historical community, and thanks to the contributions of the community historian, who I've gotten to know and I greatly respect, Sadie Shaw, she's really just the preeminent holder of all the history of the wonderful community. Because of her and so many others, the legacy of the historical community of CTAC will continue to be perpetuated for generations to come. So I congratulate them as the legacy continues, and we just add that God would continue to bless that wonderful community and this wonderful country that we're privileged to live in. Mr. Speaker, I yield back.
Chair recognizes gentle lady.
That's all your time?
That's all.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'll be back, I'll be back.
The next speaker is Kristin Fenty, and then William Duke.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer and Vice Mayor Wilson, as well as other members of the council. Thank you for offering the opportunity for residents to come and speak to the issue of the budget. Like my sisters over here, I'm the surviving spouse of a military member who died in line of duty. My husband, Lieutenant Colonel Joseph Fenty, was the commander of a search and reconnaissance unit, and he died while in a combat extraction in the mountains between Afghanistan and Pakistan, pursuing bin Laden and fighting the terrorists in that area. He died when his helicopter crashed and burned for 11 hours. His death is not recognized by the Department of Defense as being killed in action, because it was not hostile, meaning he was not killed at the hands of the enemy. Yet he did die in service to our country and in the line of duty. I feel as though my sisters very thoroughly covered the issue. The only thing that I would add is that the current tax relief that's given to survivors of KIA was put into law, I believe with an oversight about the difference between KIA and line-of-duty death. And, I'm sorry, I'm very emotional, but there is not equity with the way in which line-of-duty deaths are treated with first responders, and voting into law a full waiver for line-of-duty deaths would not only take care of the very small number of individuals who have borne the burden, the very great burden of loss of income as well as lifestyle and family, but it would be a very, I'm going to lose my track, it would be a very small amount of revenue. So I'm asking that you provide equity with line-of-duty death losses with first responders and extend this relief to all line-of-duty death who served our country. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is William Duke. After Mr. Duke is Stephen Johnston.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name's William Duke, Dr. William Duke. I'm the vice chair of the Tidewater Libertarian Party, Robert Dean's organization. I'm also a proud member of Diana's Tea Party. I guess you know that after income tax, real estate tax is one of the most regressive taxes that someone can, can use to raise funds for government. There are many better ways to do it, and it is quite a burden on some people. Some old guy who bought a house back in 1957, it happened to be on the waterfront, it was a pretty little piece of property, he paid for it over 20, 30 years, and now it's worth $2.5 million, and he can't afford to stay in his own home because he's living on some fixed income. Maybe he was a city employee, I don't know. But, I mean, that would be an example. Another example is if your real estate taxes go up, right, and you have renters in your property, well, you're going to raise the rent on those renters, so the people who are least able to carry the burden of the increased tax revenues are the people living in his property, how are they going to do it? A lot of people are going to have to sell to just keep their heads above water, people on fixed incomes, the sort of people who you'd like to be able to say could enjoy their retirement here in Virginia Beach are going to have to leave, and who knows where the hell they're going to go. If you want to raise a tax that's not regressive, you might raise the sales tax. Of course, it's, it's one thing to do it at a state or national level, and at the local level, you raise the sales tax too much, well, people will buy their stuff outside of the city, and that'll hurt business. It's a problem, I understand, but there's got to be a better way to do it than doing it this way. Now, in my remaining time, I'll just point out that you ended the fiscal year with $180 million in surplus and projected the proposed budget will have a surplus in excess of $200 million, yet you can't find tax relief. Now, if you really have to keep the tax rate as high as possible for fear of having to raise tax rate in the future, then you could consider giving a fee holiday to homeowners. That would offset some of the increases, but of course you can't do that. You can't do anything. You can't help the people of the city you govern in any kind of relief for the taxes that are going to be going up on their property and the fees that they're paying, so I can...
Your time has expired.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
The last in-person speaker is Stephen Johnston, and then after Mr. Johnston, we'll move to the WebEx speakers.
Good evening.
Stephen, how are you?
I'm doing great. When Benjamin Franklin came out of a meeting where they have written the Constitution as we know it today, he was asked the question, what kind of government had, did you give us? And he replied, I gave you a representative form of government, if you can keep it. Here in Virginia Beach, we've started to lose it. Two of the districts on the school board don't have representatives living in their, in their districts. I'm not sure what, how the school board can justify that. But recently, they passed their budget with 20% of the city of Virginia Beach not having any representation on the school board, and that is just not right. Now, we know we are going to have to pass the budget. We know you're going to have to fund the schools, but how much and how soon? What I would like to see happen with the schools is that you pass an amendment to the budget. Fully fund the schools, what they're asking for, with a caveat that you will only give them the state-required minimum until they've corrected the problem on the school board, and have a representative from every district on the school board. Why should North Beach have two representatives, but Centerville and Ocean Lakes have none? That's not right. Excuse me. And by doing this, you will, you will have, use the power of the purse. I do realize that you can't control the school board and tell them what to do, but you can control their funding. And if you tell them they're not getting their full funding until they correct the problem, they will correct the problem as fast as they can to get their dollars. This is the American thing to do, and it's the right thing to do. And I just had a comment about CTAC. CTAC is a gem in the city of Virginia Beach. We don't want a CTAC go the way of the Centerville African-American community, Burton Stations African-American community. We need CTAC here in Virginia Beach. Thank you very much.
We have two speakers via WebEx. The first speaker is Susan Potter. Ms. Potter, you are unmuted and may begin. Susan Potter, you are unmuted and may begin. Kevin, can you hear at all? Okay. We'll move on to the next one, Jonathan Rose. Mr. Rose, you are unmuted and may begin. Kevin, is anybody responding? No. Mayor, they are not responding via WebEx. That is all the speakers.
Okay, I personally want to thank, on behalf of this council, your participation coming out tonight. Be assured that you were, were heard, and once again, you know, Virginia Beach, we're going to continue to strive to make this the most inclusive community in this great country. Thank you very much, most appreciated. And to Councilmember Taylor, you and your family are in our prayers. Thank you.